Oh goodness. All right, if I could get everybody to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States.
One nation under God, indivisible, with just us.
Thank you, everyone, and welcome. It is our May 4th, 2020 special board meeting. It's starting right at 6:03 here tonight. Go ahead and get this meeting called alter. First up, what are we routine matters 2.01? Approval of the agenda for the May 4, 2020 special meeting. This is an action item.
Number approval.
Second.
And a second for approval of our May 4 special meeting. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed, motion passes. Right, we'll go right into our agenda here. Our 3.01 is new business. Lodging MSBA policy revisions are first reading. Dr. Condon, who would like to get us kicked off here?
Well, so we have all the policies listed and if I could, if you don't mind, if I could just pull Policy INB off of this list and move it to a separate item because that one is, it's the first time this policy will be brought to the board. And it might take, it will really not be voted on to be lodged tonight. But we'll be open for discussion for kind of a first reading with the board, if that's okay.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Wait, I have a quick question.
Sure.
So the INB will not be lodged tonight?
No, I'd like the board to have some time to discuss it and make suggestions. And if there are suggestions for changes to that policy, it'll need to go back to MSBA for approval. For those changes to be approved, it's going to be probably another back and forth process. And if we go through the list of these other policies and there are suggestions like that of changes to these, those will also be pulled off and they'll have to go to MSBA first.
So I guess I was under the impression that when you lodge a policy, that's part of what you can do. You lodge the policy and it opens up for discussion. And then you can send it back to MSBA and then you bring it back to us to lodge. So I guess I'm not understanding the difference.
Well, what we can do is we can go through each of these because we have, I have kind of recorded where everyone has questions about specific policies here. So maybe we can go through and respond to those questions and we'll see which ones get pulled out. Aside from maybe that one, because there will probably be other ones that will be pulled out that will need to go to MSBA before, before the board votes on them on May 18th.
Okay, I think that that if we're not lodging it, we're still going to continue to do work on this policy and the timeline for that like is.
Well, as long as we need to make the policy look the way we want it to look. That, the reason why I suggested maybe pulling that one and saving it to the end because I think there might be more discussion about them because it's brand new. It'll be the, the first time we've had an opportunity to talk about it.
And we can discuss that tonight, correct?
Okay.
Absolutely. Yeah, 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 yeah. I just thought we'd go through the ones that you, that everyone was introduced to two weeks ago first and then save policy that, Policy INB to the end so that if we need more time for discussion, we can.
Great.
Okay. All right, so the first question that we had for policies listed was Policy DEA. We had a question about the calculation of property taxes. Mr. Romei, are you able to respond to that question? I can read the question again if we need a reminder. How do we plan to implement the new calculation of property taxes for telephone companies or banking institutions? When property taxes may be refunded by DUCI is there? And is there a decline in the property tax rate?
And also DEA is entitled revenues from tax sources, correct?
Correct. Sorry.
Yes, I can answer that. The policy really doesn't address that. It just points out the fact that that's an opportunity for school districts to raise some revenue if they lost any property tax revenue from telephone companies based on adjustments. But it sounds like it only applies to school districts that were already at their ceiling, their tax rate ceiling. And we were not. Our operating tax levy in 2019 was $3.47 and our ceiling is $5.35. So if there were any adjustments that would have lowered assessed values, then our tax rates would have been allowed to increase because we weren't at the ceiling. So my understanding is, is that that does not apply to us. That potential fee that we could impose doesn't apply to us because we were not at our ceiling. So that's a good thing. We would not have lost any revenue as a result of that.
Do we have additional questions about Policy DEA?
Oh, I think, I think the second part of that question was about the banking institutions, Mr. Romei. I think you might have sent an email about that. So when the property taxes of the banking institutions decrease, some of that might be refunded by DUCI. And in the past, they have not, but it might happen in the future. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct, except it's a state tax, not a property tax, is my understanding. We receive financial institution taxes from financial institutions that are within our district boundaries. It's, it's a tax based on the profits of the banks or financial institutions. And our revenue source from the financial institution taxes is relatively low. We receive around $400,000, which is consistent with a lot of school districts around us, with the exception of Parkway. Parkway receives 7.1 million in financial institutions taxes. And I believe most of that's because of Scott trade is in their school district. So I think if there is any decline in those taxes, a district like that would be impacted much more than us. But it is a requirement that DUCI goes through this calculation and then they would have to remit state funds to school districts if they were impacted by any loss in revenue.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for keeping track of all that. I think they might decline.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions on DEA? The next policy that we had a question on was Policy DJF, and that's on purchasing. Let me, I'm kind of going back and forth between screens to make sure I get the questions. Do we consider contractor integrity and record of past performance in the bidding process? And how do we certify quality bidder vendors?
Yes, and I can answer that. We certainly consider their past performance and their integrity when we recommend somebody to the board for a project. They would still be allowed to submit a bid, but we may not recommend them if we had a bad experience using them in the past. For any new vendors, we check the references. We also look to see if they've been involved in any lawsuits. And if everything checks out and we feel good about them, then we will make a recommendation to the board. But with any vendor that we select for a project, whether they're a vendor that we used in the past or a new vendor, we always interview the contractor after bids were submitted to us and before we make a recommendation to make sure that they're meeting all of our bid specs before we make a recommendation to the board.
All right. Any other questions on Policy DJF, a federal programs and projects? Oh. All right, we had a question about policy. The next policy here, selection of construction manager at risk. And that is Policy FED. Let me take a look at that question. Will this policy be considered for any construction projects?
And I don't know if it will or not. Currently Prop S, we did recommend a construction manager to the Board of Education who approved our selection. That's if Prop S passes, but that construction manager was hired as a construction manager as advisor, not at risk. And really the difference, the main difference between an advisor or at risk is if, as an advisor, they're basically working as a consultant for us overseeing the project. If they're at risk, then they're responsible for completing the project within the budget that's been established. And so they hold the contingency funds, which if it, if the project comes in less than our budget and, or what the project amount is, then they keep those contingency funds. If it exceeds it, then they have to cover any difference. So that's the at-risk part in their behalf. But our experience in the past has always been that we generally save money from our contingency funds. And our concern over using a construction manager at risk is potentially they, they would work to keep it in budget, which could lower the, the quality of construction is, is one of our fears. So I don't know if we will use a construction manager at risk in the future, but it's, it's certainly a possibility. And, and this policy is relatively new for school districts and governmental entities that allows school districts to hire CM at risk.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Romei. Any other questions about FED? All right, thank you. We had, yes.
Sorry, I had a question on DEA. Sorry, I was trying to raise my hand and forgot to unmute. Mike, does the changes that's been made to this policy and the increase from 15,000 or 25,000 to 50,000, does this prevent us from creating a qualifications based on call for any of these projects? And I guess my question is, if it's a higher threshold for these projects where now we don't have to put these projects out or something, is there a way to make sure that we're already preapproving qualified firms? Or something so that even if we don't have to put it out or you have to come to the board for those, that we have a guarantee that we're hiring qualified people?
Yeah, we have, there's a separate, there's the construction policy and then the purchasing policy. And the purchasing policy does require that we get three written quotes for anything over $2,000. So we would, even if it is a construction project that's under $50,000, we would still get three written proposals or quotes for the work. But it does give us some control over which vendors we select. So we would select vendors that we, we believe are qualified vendors that we may have used in the past. But we can still bring that to the board for approval.
But, well, and I, and I guess the way that I was reading is that it's not required.
I think it's, I thought there was a policy that said, I think in the purchasing policy, anything over $25,000, I believe still has to come to the board. I have to check that.
Okay. All right. Well, you know, if you could clarify that, that would just be good, just because that's a big increase.
Okay, yeah, I'll check into that.
Mike, is it a difference between going to the board to request bids and going to the board to select the, the vendor?
It's, yeah, it's to whether or not we have to, the team is for sealed bids. So it increases it to $50,000 for sealed bids, which is, which requires us to advertise and have a public bid opening. And so that's really the, the difference between increasing the limit. Prior to that, it was $15,000 where we would have to advertise and then collect sealed bids, open them in public. Now it increases that amount. But the purchasing policy still requires that we get quotes.
Okay, thank you. And then we're going to check and then get back to Ms. Pangborn on that?
Yes, I'll, I'll send something to you to forward to the entire board, but I have to check that purchasing policy. I think there's language in there that establishes a limit of when we have to bring something to the Board of Education for approval.
Okay.
I thought it was 25,000.
Okay.
I have a quick question on this. You know, it made me think, Michelle, that we do have, where I wondered that we kind of seem redundant, like where we have to ask, that you all have to ask us to go out for an RFP and then we have to approve the RFP. Is that typical of what other school districts are doing? Like, do, do other school districts require, you know, approval to go seek a bid or seek RFPs? Because I think sometimes that could really limit Mike if he's waiting for a board meeting to seek that bid. I don't know if this applies to that, but it kind of seems to fit in, or I could be totally off.
If it's okay, Michelle, I, I think that, I don't know that other school districts do that. We used to not do that. That's something that we started probably four or five years ago, where we started asking the board permission to issue an RFP. So I don't think we're required by policy to do that. It's just a practice that we started a few years ago. Just to, mainly to make sure that the board was informed that we were seeking bids.
Okay, so Mike, it doesn't necessarily stop you from seeking bids if you haven't, say, we don't have a board meeting and you would like to go get a bid on something, you're still able to go and do that?
We could still, well, the, the bids are for, what we asked the board permission is, when we asked the board permission to seek bids, it's for RFPs, request for proposals that we would advertise and then have a sealed bids and public bid opening. So we would not do that unless it's something greater than $50,000. Because now it would be written quotes for anything under 50,000. So that's, that's the difference. Before it was, anything over 15,000, we would first ask permission to issue the RFP and then we would bring back the results.
Okay, thanks.
All right, thank you. We had a couple of questions on Policy FEF, and that's on construction contracts, bidding and awards. So speaking of, and the questions I saw, there were two of them. How will these changes impact us in Kirkwood? And then there's a suggestion that the policy might be improved by having bids identify whether they're paying prevailing wage or if they just meet one of those requirements.
Michelle, can you state that policy again? I'm sorry, I'm trying to help Cindy Nelson get on. I, I'm running the screen. What's the policy number again?
FEF.
Okay.
Yes, FEF now establishes a threshold for requiring us to pay prevailing wage. Before there, there was no threshold, so we required prevailing wage on any of our construction projects. And now the, the minimum is $75,000. So if a project is going to cost more than $75,000, then the contractor is required to pay prevailing wage. And so with this policy change, we would not have to require that for smaller projects, which then potentially opens us, allows us to get bids from smaller companies, local companies. So I think it helps us. It, it could save us some money as well. If, if the project is less than $75,000, but there are change orders that pushes it over $75,000, then that, that change order, then there will be, it would be required to have or pay prevailing wage for that change order that, that pushes it over the $75,000 limit. But this is, I think this will help the school district with some of our local contractors that might not have been able to bid in the past.
Okay, are there additional questions about that from our, any board members?
I just have a comment that this is something that is making us be compliant with this House Bill 1729. It, it was a lot of discussion, especially from the rural districts for the legislative package this year. So I think it probably will help them even more than it helps us. But all these, a lot of these changes are due to these House bills.
Right. Thank you.
I have a question. So Mike, did you have specific local contractors in mind that you would like to be using that aren't paying a prevailing wage right now?
Nothing that comes to mind, but I do remember several years ago, we ordered furniture. And I do remember there was a company that we bought the furniture from and they, we wanted them to put the furniture together. And the insulation fees, they asked the question whether or not we required prevailing wage on it because they had to have carpenters put together the furniture. And my response was yes, they had to pay prevailing wage. So in that case, they, they still were able to do it. It just cost us more to have that furniture put together and installed. And so I think in, in some ways, it, it could save us money. I don't know of any, any particular contractor, or I'm sure maintenance folks would know. But I, I think the potential is, is that some local and, and smaller contractors might be able to give us bids on, on some of these smaller projects.
And then my other question is, can we change this policy in a way that requires the bidders to identify whether they're paying the prevailing wage or sort of the, the alternative?
Yes, we, we can ask that question in our, in our bidding documents. And in particular, you know, if we don't really know if a, there could be a project that is, is close to $75,000 and we may not really know if it's going to exceed $75,000 or not. So what we would likely do is, is ask that they pay prevailing wage and give us a bid with prevailing wage included. But if the bid ends up being less than $75,000, then we would ask for a salary deduction, wage deduction, because it would not be required. So we can, we can work with our attorney to draft the bid documents so that we make sure we cover ourselves, but we can certainly ask for that information as well.
You don't think that needs to be in the policy itself, FEF, to get that clarification?
I mean, that, that requires them to give us that information?
Right. My read of the policy was they just had to identify that they are compliant with the law, not whether they're compliant because they pay prevailing wage or they're compliant because they pay the PW CMW.
I don't know if it has to be in the policy, but we can, we can clarify that in our bid documents.
Is there a benefit to having it in the policy or a restriction that it could lead to?
I mean, my concern is that it is going to drive down pay for people who are providing services and perhaps the quality of the services that are being provided. And so, you know, I certainly prefer to, I'm not sure that I'm in favor of the policy as a whole, but certainly if we're going to allow bids paying a lower wage, we should know that and be able to take that into account when we're selecting among the bidders.
So Mike, maybe we could take a look at that policy and see if we can insert that language.
Yes, we can. I'll, I'll discuss it with our attorney and probably MSBA and figure out what we can do to, to add that.
I'd also do reviews of some other policies in other districts as well and see what they, their language looks like as well as for.
I don't really, it doesn't really matter to me as much what other districts are doing, but I would agree with Mark that he can say whatever they want, but I'd rather see it written down.
Yeah, my point is just get as much info on it as we can.
I would guess that other districts in St. Louis County do not have language in there like that. Maybe, well, maybe Melville does, but other than that, I would doubt it.
Yeah, I'd be interested in knowing what the surrounding, you know, districts are doing as well. But, you know, certainly I think we need to have language in this policy if we are going to pass the policy that, you know, puts a commitment on us to know and understand and consider those factors.
So we, we flagged that policy as well as DEA for some additional work. Thank you.
Thanks.
That brings us to the G policies, which have to do with human resources. There was a question that was asked about, I think it was GCI, GCB. And it was about a transfer of a staff member and whether that needs to be approved by the board according to the language in the policy. Are you on, Cindy?
Yes, Ginger, the magician somehow got me on.
That's awesome. Welcome.
Right, so, so this policy is actually a new policy that we would be adopting and it is in alignment with our current practice. We bring any changes in staffing and assignments to the Board of Education for approval, which would result in a change in compensation or contractual language.
So if it's a, a change in an assignment that doesn't affect the contract, compensation or benefits, then it doesn't fall within those parameters, right?
Correct.
Okay. And that was similar to GDI, which is the support staff version of that same policy, right?
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions about that policy, either GCI or GDI? So we have quite a few G policies here and I did not receive any additional questions about these. So I'll just open the floor. Are there any questions about any of these specific HR recipes or policies that begin with the letter G? All right, awesome. That brings us to the academic calendar. That's Policy IC. And we did have a suggestion from one of our board members that the language in that policy currently is related to House Bill 604. And it states that the school year cannot begin before, well, it gives very specific guidelines to when the school year can begin, not, not before 10 days prior to Labor Day, I believe was the language.
It's 14 calendar days prior to the first Monday in September.
Awesome, thank you. And so one of our board members has suggested we change the language to, quote, "The first day of school will be set in accordance with Missouri law." And that way, if the law does change, we don't need to change the policy. Any thoughts about that suggestion?
Michelle?
Yes?
Go ahead.
Sorry. I, I guess my only question, this may be nitpicking it a little too much, is it says the first day of school for students, and we have different start dates for our students next year. Is that something that we foresee doing more frequently? Because it just seems a little, a little off to me.
No, we would not foresee doing that in the future. I think next year with the, the lateness of Labor Day, so as late as it could possibly be is the start of school next year. And we would expect in the future that we would have more days to work with and be able to start school on the same day.
Okay. And then in future years, I mean, I'm just playing devil's advocate if we're changing it, but we could have different start dates that just, it just causes confusion in my mind.
Okay.
I have, I have a question about this one. There was a lot of discussion about this. And you'll notice under the requirements portion, it says, "In accordance with Missouri law, the first day shall be set no earlier than fourteen calendar days prior." So this is actually a Missouri law. So before we change this wording, I think we will have to send it in because it was quite specific. The good news is that they might waive this requirement this year. There's some talk of that. So I think it's possible that it could be waived to help us out in our current situation, but.
Yeah, I'm not crazy about this, but, but M S B A flushed this out in accordance with the new law and wrote it up so that, to make sure that we were all going to be compliant with the law. So, I mean, messing around with it now, I mean, I'm not crazy about the law either, but M S B A wrote this up so that we would all be compliant.
And also, because I'm the one that suggested the change, it, it actually does, you know, it's not a huge deal, because we do have to be compliant with fourteen calendar days before the first Monday in September. I'm not, certainly not suggesting that we try not to be compliant with that. And my revision recognizes that there's a Missouri law that, that governs it. But again, to Andy's point, there may be changes, including last minute changes in that law. And so having a policy that doesn't specify fourteen calendar days prior to the first Monday in September would give us sort of maximum flexibility. So we don't have to come back and rechange the policy. If the law has changed, we can just go, go forward with putting together.
So I think it's helpful to know the genesis of why one of us, whomever it is, it's nice to know that it's you, Mark, because we never really know who's asking these questions. So we don't really know who to address that to. But I think it's good for us to all speak up and be able to understand the genesis of maybe a question or a change, because I don't think, you know, our questions are innocuous in any way. So I think, I appreciate, Mark, you clarifying why you would want that switched up. And you're right, we are going through some things coming up that, you know, we don't want to be turning around, changing policies, you know, every few months at this point.
Right. So, so my, my point was just, it, it prevents us from having to change the policy in the future. You know, it also avoids looking like we agree with the policy when many of us don't. But obviously, I'm not suggesting that we, you know, violate state law by starting prematurely. But I don't see how it violates the state law to say, "We'll follow the state law" without specifically identifying what the current state requirement is.
I can run this by M S B A. I can run that language by them to see if they approve of it and then get back with the board.
I think, I think that's great to run it by them, because even just to say, "In accordance with the law," whatever, as Mark said, if, if it does change.
Right. Okay. All right. Got it. Thank you. All right. The next policy on the list is I G A E B, Sexual Health Instruction. And there, we just had a couple of questions about this. The change in the law, and maybe I'll let Dr. Painter talk to this, is about providing trauma-informed, developmentally appropriate sex abuse training for students not lower than in grade six. And the question was, if the parents do opt out of instruction, how will we be able to provide this to students? Did I phrase that question correctly?
I'm not exactly sure, because I, I believe the question has something to do with can parents opt out for the sexual abuse instruction? And the answer to that is yes. Page forty-nine of House Bill sixty-four actually outlines a process for this. So parents can opt out of either or, or both, the sexual abuse instruction and human sexuality instruction. If there was, I mean, if parents opt out, in, in theory, they could opt out any of those years. And so it's possible that that would not then be, there would, students would not have any sexual abuse instruction during their time from sixth grade on up.
But can you talk a little bit about the program that we do have in the elementary level, I think?
Yeah, that's a little bit different. And actually, I'm going to let Dr. Bailey speak about that, because that is often coordinated through the Student Services Department, but that's called Safe Touch.
Yeah. So we've utilized an organization that comes in and does a Safe Touch program from our preschool all the way up, basically until middle school age. So this policy with it starting in sixth grade kind of is a good timing for that. But the Safe Touch program really goes through developmentally appropriate objectives at each grade level. So preschool has specific objectives, kindergarten, first grade has specific objectives, and then second, third, and then fourth through sixth. And really, the goal is to identify what would constitute a safe touch by somebody and what are some of your parts of your body, your areas of your body that you shouldn't have people touching, that are strangers, just really identifying, they utilize paper dolls. It's in collaboration with the St. Louis County Children's Service Fund, the United Way, Jewish Family Services, the Children's Trust Fund, all the different organizations that support our children that also pay for things like our B J C healthcare, educational support counselors. So we've been doing this for about three to four years now. Lots of school district, you, school districts use the same program for their students. And it really is about a twenty-minute lesson that somebody comes in and does with the class. So it's not a all-year sort of thing. It really is just a, a one-time thing that that class would get.
And parents are notified of this program as well, and they do have the opportunity to opt out if they don't want their child to participate.
Correct. Yes.
So we had some additional questions about the parent opt-out is kind of what that looks like. How do we, first of all, how do we inform parents that the instruction is going to happen? The, any instruction within this policy, I would guess. And then how do the parents see the curriculum, and then what does that look like if they opt out?
Information regarding both the sexual abuse instruction and human sexuality instruction will be made available on the district website. That has historically been offered through teachers at the school sites, but we're working to align that and get that on our district website, as well as the information regarding parent, parent opt-out rights and their processes to do so. And then in addition to that, teachers will also notify, and they have been doing this, parents and guardians about instruction prior to delivery. And they, they will be directing families to the website for additional information. So if, typically if a parent opts out in a school, then either that teacher or perhaps the guidance counselor or the principal just works with the student and the family to find a way that they, basically, they, they're not, they don't take part in, in that lesson or that unit or that portion of a unit and are just given an alternative location to go work on something else.
I have a question, Michelle.
Sure.
So what's on the screen now? I noticed it says the word "public" and "public record" are stricken in. Is that what M S B A did, or did we do that?
That's M S B A.
Is there, is there any reason, do we know why they did that? And he just, but we, and if we don't know, I get it. I'm just asking, was there a reason why they?
You know, they did not provide that in their summary as to why they changed that.
But.
We did not make any changes to M S B A's recommendations for this policy.
Okay. But we will, Brian, to your point, Dr. Painter, we will make, we will put it on our, the opt-out options and the process on our district website.
Yes.
So that, okay. I just find it curious that they, they struck the word "public."
Right.
It just says "available for inspection prior to the use." So seems like that's kind of on the opposite end of what we want in terms of transparency, but.
Yeah. The only thing I could think of is if, if a district happens to be using a, like a textbook company or some, or some resource that is copyrighted, they may not be able to post that, for example, on a website as much as they would just notify that this is what we use. And in that situation, parents would be invited to come in and look at the resources. But that's, I mean, that's speculation. I honestly don't know.
Yeah, that's a good question.
Yeah, as long as we and Kirkwood are sensitive that we don't want luck, we're not, we're hiding it or we're not making it easy for a parent to find, I'm good.
Correct.
It does seem like a strange thing to cross out if.
Yeah. I, I just, so if you, if you can find clarification before we vote, I just, I would be curious to know what their reasoning was.
Okay. Good question. I'm going to note that. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have, I have a few questions.
No, I was just going to say that we always, we always have informed our parents prior to instruction in sexual health and have provided that option for them before. And we have provided them with the curriculum before. It just hasn't been on the website, so. Sorry, G Mary, go ahead.
Oh, you're good. So all of these changes are M S B recommendations, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So one of the things where it's talking about in the notice and opt-out, it says that, you know, the, the district will notify the parents and guardians of the basic content of the district's human sexuality. I just want to ensure that when we're talking about this topic, that, you know, that number one, the content is based on the district's approved curriculum for, you know, human sexuality education. I, I get a little bit concerned that that leaves it open to people can choose the content when, in all actuality, this teaching is needed to be based on board-approved curriculum, correct?
Right. Yes. And, and the, as we discussed previously, I mean, a long time ago, but it's been a while since, since health and structure, health curriculum has been brought to the board, because standards have not been updated at the state level in quite some time. We're due to review our health, our K-12 health curriculum next year. We had, we had been in talks with a consultant to help us work through that process, because it is something we have not done in quite some time. But those talks are a little bit on hold right now, given our situation.
Yeah, I just want to ensure that our, this policy is reflected, that our teachers understand that they are teaching the curriculum in, in this case and not choosing their, you know.
Absolutely.
Okay. And then the other thing that I just want to ask real quick is, now, this policy, I think that most of the conversation that we have had has been around it pertaining to health class. But I think, I guess I ask, does this policy only pertain to, what does this policy pertain to?
Well, I think it typically pertains to health, because we're talking about sexual health instruction. So primarily around reproductive systems, that sort of thing. And that is typically taught in health classes. I do think there's the potential, particularly in the upper grades, or in high school, where there's only one health course, for example, that, that it may be discussed in some other physical education classes, just as, on a, as-needed basis. But I think that this is really about health instruction. The sexual abuse part of this could be in health, or it could be part of the guidance program. But that is something that we still have to figure out where it fits best, because that was not previously part of a policy.
So that brings me to my next question, that, again, you know, if, if this then is being talked about maybe in other areas, and we're giving parents the ability to opt out in the area of health, how do we, you know, so will parents be given the option to opt out in other areas that, that, that.
Absolutely.
Health is discussed?
Absolutely. Well, and I, I think, first of all, I don't know that there will be lots of, that, I don't know that we'll have conversations about sexual abuse or, or sexual health that aren't about lessons themselves. And so those would be, you know, those would be things where we would, they'd be planned instruction that we would be notifying parents about, and then they would have that opt-out opportunity as per the policy.
Okay. So just to be clear, then, that this policy then pertains to other things other than health class?
Well, I can't say that for sure. I, I would, I would say that sexually, because most, most instruction at the middle school and high school level is not coming from a guidance counselor from, from an instruction standpoint, like in a, like there's, guidance counselors don't have a class that they teach, per se. And so I think the, the greatest likelihood that this would be in a health course from a certified health teacher. But we will need to have conversations with our guidance counselor to make sure that they know that this, that this opt-out is part of this. So if they are teaching lessons about sexual abuse, then they need to be presenting that information. They need, it needs to be aligned with curriculum and standards so that we can be providing the information to parents, including the opt-out process.
Yeah, that's, that's, I guess, my point is that when these, if we need to maybe look into, we, when these conversations and things could possibly be occurring, because we owe, you know, I think it's important that we're giving parents that opportunity to opt out from, from these kind of things. And, you know, and I think it's important for us to kind of have a clear understanding of when and how this is being taught in other areas, since this is a topic that can be a little controversial. And that's why we have a, you know, a curriculum that when it's being taught in health class, they're following the curriculum, right? And so, and we have a process for that. So I, I would just ask that you look into where else this is kind of talked about, and then kind of making sure that, that those professionals know that, you know, this policy is in place and that parents have the right to opt out of this. And then my only other thing that I would suggest is that, or that I feel is important. I think that we have to really look at children's social emotional health in regards to if a parent does choose to opt out from this, that we are as, that the professionals are really making sure that this, the child does not feel isolated or made to feel like they're not a part of this. Or, you know, we need to make sure that our staff is making this as comfortable for the family and the children who, who choose to opt out. So that, you know, so that we're not, I don't know what I'm. So that, you know, so that we're not, I don't know what I'm trying to say, but.
Sure. Yeah. Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Make sure that, go ahead, Brian.
I just, I, I have confidence that our teachers and our guidance counselors and principals are, are, are supporting that process in a way that is going to respect the. The individuality, the dignity of, of the student and, and not single them out at all.
Yeah, no, and, and Brian, I have all the confidence as well, but I just think that it's really important that. We also say that and speak it and believe it and.
And live it.
And live it, absolutely, because after all, this is, it, it is about kids' social emotional health and that, so.
Yeah. Any additional questions or comments about I G A E B?
I guess I just have a clarification. Is, G Mary, are you asking that this policy be correlated with the curriculum policies? Was that your question, just to make sure they're working together?
I just want, what my point is, is that I, I want to ensure that when it comes to sexual health. That we are following a curriculum. Does that make sense? You know, so that I, I think that that is. My point, and so to be quite honest, like, you know, if it's not in the, you know, I don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah, you might, Dr. Painter, I think as far as referencing the curriculum policy, I'm sure in here it's somewhere you could probably just reference it.
I would just add, I think trying to distill it down is, as we work through this, we just want to make sure we're aligned to curriculum. Aligning to instruction standards, that we have a solid opt-in, opt-out, that the information is public. And that, and that we are, it's either, it's either health education or it's not. We just need to have clarity. So I think we got some things to work through. You've got notes, just trying to give some perspective there.
Yeah, yeah, I agree. I think probably a little bit more work on this one, too.
Yeah.
And I'll tell you, and agree on that. I think we've seen the, the, when it comes to outside of a, you know, an actual health. Lesson, we've seen a difference of opinion in our community on what constitutes. Something that would fall within sexual health instruction and, and things that don't. So I think we need to be sensitive to that.
Whoever's talking, we can't hear you. We gotta start over.
Sorry, sorry, I forgot. I didn't move my microphone. Are we being clear anywhere? With parents on the amount of time that we are giving them of notice of this curriculum? Right? It's so we, we're gonna let you know a week ahead of time or just, again, so it's not like tomorrow this is happening and. Parents getting up, you know, get upset or don't read the email.
Yeah, I mean, I, I will say that historically it's been, I, I believe at least a week, but it's probably longer than that in some situations. These are, you know, as, as, our health teachers live this on a regular basis. They're used to. Having conversations with kids around topics that may be uncomfortable for the students or parents, and so they are very sensitive to these. Needs, and I think that they've, you know, historically, I, I think we provide that information in, in a way that. Maybe in, in varied ways, in, in addition to an email, I mean, they're, they're working to make sure that the parents do know what's going on.
To that point, Dr. Painter, I think it would be very helpful if we have. A consistent process on how parents are notified at all levels. At every grade on this, and then a consistent process. That, that parents follow from building to building, from level to level, just so that, you know, it's.
Yeah, we, we tighten that up with the elementarys this, this year, and we were in the process of working with both middle schools on that as well. Again, so we can have one information or one bit of information, one letter, all of that on the website that everybody's using. Consistency and resources. Everybody's been following the same curriculum, but there have been people over the, the last number of years. Who have found different resources, and we want to make sure that we're aligned on those as well.
Well, and when you say they have found different resources. There's. I guess, how do we, especially on sensitive topics such as sexual and instruction? How do we? Say that we're teaching a curriculum. But then there could be different resources that teachers are, you know, using. And have the, you know, have those resources, are they tied to our curriculum? Are they?
They do address, they do address the curriculum.
Think that it's, it's, it's easier to say you can go out and get your own resources when you're teaching World War II. But when you're teaching health and, and that kind of thing, then you're getting into a little bit of a. A more controversial area as far as. Coming up with your own resources and your own, you know, curriculum. So, but, and I, and I will tag on to G Mary, like the consistency across the schools. As well as the different levels, whatever we're doing at Robinson, we should also be doing at Nifer, that kind of thing.
Well, the curriculum is very different at Robinson and Health.
No, but I'm talking about, I'm not talking about the curriculum, I'm talking about the notice that G Mary was talking about, that notices of, you know.
That's what I was talking about, too.
That kind of thing.
Absolutely.
The procedures, sure.
Yes, thank you, better word.
Well, and I, I guess I would just go back to Dr. Painter, just to. Ask that when you have topics like, like this, that are controversial. That, you know, that there is a process in place that teachers are taking. Whether it is to check with administrator or check with a facilitator or that kind of thing. Because again, you know, you're teaching, they're, they're teaching the approved curriculum. Yet have the ability to go out and get their own resources. And, and I just want to ensure that there is a way that we are. Making sure that that is in balance. Or, you know, like, like Julie said, it's one thing to go out and get resources on World War II. It's another thing to go out and get resources on teaching sexual health.
Sure. Sure. So that they should be, the resources should be vetted and used commonly among all the teachers.
Right, I don't think that this is something that, yeah.
Okay, and that's not in the policy, but that would be a procedure that we would follow.
Yeah.
Well, based on the policy.
Yep.
All right, thank you. Additional conversation or questions about I G A E B? Thank you, everybody. And then we get into a couple other policies, the J policies. One question that did come up, and I'll draw your attention to policy J H G. Reporting and Investigating Child Abuse and Neglect. And this is, a policy has been adjusted, just to add, that board members would also be trained now. In, and become mandated reporters, and so a question came from a board member. Regarding the kinds of training that staff members have. Related to being mandated reporters and recognizing the signs of sexual abuse. So I do know that employees are, have required videos that we watch each year prior to the start of school. Provided by music or insurance company, and though. They're of varying lengths. Cindy, do you recall the length of the training for sexual abuse?
I want to say it's around forty minutes. I know it's not two and a half hours.
Okay.
It, it's much shorter than that.
So I think the two and a half hour training will be provided by MSBA, but do you think the one-hour refresher? That possibly our. Music video could be utilized for that refresher for board members? I guess we'll have to wait and see.
Yeah, and the videos are broken down into different modules, like one is about technology and the other is about. Identifying the signs of abuse, so when you put them all together, they could be the one-hour refresher, but we probably should go back through those trainings specifically. And make sure they meet the requirements of this policy.
Okay.
I think, I think some of those are videos the board members also have to watch each year as part of our music training, because we're also insured through music. But this training is for Board Policy B H A, and it is administered by the MSBA. So this is special board training policy that we can do as a board, or we can do individually. So I think Darnell had mentioned last time, too, that it might be a good opportunity for, for board development to do it as a board.
Great, and so I guess we'll be getting more information from SBA about that training, right?
I have the information on that training.
Okay, great.
And Dr. Condon, I believe it was also asked if the board would be given, you know, what our protocol is as well, not just the training for identifying. But the protocol we follow for the, the number that you contact and, and those steps, and I have modified version of that that I'll share with the board. Once we have this policy approval that has the phone number on basically every slide and talks about signs and what that looks like. And how to identify things, and then who to report and what to report, so that will all be shared with the board members as well.
Great, thank you, Dr. Bailey.
Thanks, Dr. Bailey, for doing that.
Are there additional questions about that particular policy, J H G? All right. Well, that takes us through all of the policies that we had presented two weeks ago to the board. We have flagged several that we will be taking back in either adjusting language or tweaking a little bit. Before board approval, and some of them will need to go back to MSBA prior to coming back to the board, so we'll keep track of all of that. But that brings us to the new policy, policy I N B, that was provided to the board recently. This policy was really developed as a result of a community member. Who provided requests that we take a look at a policy related to. Kind of balancing freedom of speech and parental rights. And so this policy I N B is entitled Teaching About Controversial Issues. We wanted to listen to the parent that had come to us and review the requests that were made in good faith. And so according to policy BF, the process starts with the superintendent. And after listening to the parent, we provided, did some research to see if there were policies. That, that met the intent of what the parent was requesting. And so Dr. Painter did quite a bit of research and found several policies from different districts. On the teaching of controversial issues. So I'm going to ask Dr. Painter maybe to talk a little bit about the work that you did. In that research, to provide a little bit of background for the board.
Sure. So this started, I actually conducted an audit or review of several policies, about twelve policies in the fall. And this continued into February. For the review, we compared policies, twelve Kirkwood policies against those of fifteen other districts. Both in our region and around the state, and these included several, or seven comparable districts within St. Louis region. Plus eight large and, and small districts that were scattered around the entire state. Policy I N B was not a part of this audit. It was noted, the, the, but it, but it was noted through our process. That five of the fifteen districts that had, that I was reviewing did have policies regarding the teaching of controversial issues. Those included Parkway, Pattonville, and Rockwood in the St. Louis area. This MSBA policy was obviously not on the books in Kirkwood, but a similar policy is in place for forty-six districts around the state. As you know, as, as Dr. Condon just mentioned, a community member formally submitted policy proposals in January of this year. And the request reviewed to consideration by our district administrators, as Dr. Condon mentioned, as per, per policies BF. And C L and K L. As part of the process to consider the request, we revisited the controversial issues policies that were in place. For those other districts, and we also examined similarities and differences across the districts, again, in light of the formal request by the community member. This information was used when drafting language for a potential Kirkwood I N B. Looking at these districts and the MSB policy, as well as the needs of our district and the community. And so that's kind of where we landed on this at this point, and we used the language to try to craft something that might. Address the needs, or at least the spirit of the proposal, recognizing that there were some things in the proposal that we actually felt were not appropriate. For us to make changes in other policies.
So we did have a few questions about the policy, and maybe I'll just start there, and we can open a discussion about that. Trying to find the question.
Do you want me to jump in? Because I think I know at least one of them.
Well, I, I have a quick question. You said, yeah, Brian, you, you mentioned that, you know, we did not feel, so who, tell me who wrote this. I mean, I know who wrote it, but I'd like you to tell the, you know, the public who, who wrote up, because this was not, I mean, the board hasn't. Been involved in writing this policy.
No, policy BF. Calls for district administrators to review the considerations and crafting a policy. And so there were six of us that spent a number of hours looking at other examples and looking at MSBA. A policy and consulting with our attorney in the process of writing this.
Right, but then, you know, the board will, in the end, kind of be, you know, that likes, that, that likes to be thrown around a lot. That the board is in charge of policy, so I really think this needs to be flushed out, you know, through the board.
Sure, well, I mean, yes, the, the board, yeah, it's obviously, it's, it's your job to approve or not approve the policy as it's written. And you can certainly make recommendations based on what we bring to you.
So the, the questions that, that Dr. Condon or Dr. Painter, you guys have the questions that some board members already asked?
Dr. Condon, did you find it, or?
Yeah, I found the, the one question, and it was about why. And it's about the third paragraph, fourth paragraph down, why the change from classroom to instructional setting?
And I think, I think that was just made to, to broaden our scope of what a classroom might be. We believe that gymnasiums, libraries, even our learning management system are part of classrooms. But I, but I think that was just, some people don't view it that way, so I think that was just to broaden the, the definition of classroom.
Okay, particularly since we're online learning right now, this, I mean.
Absolutely.
Not all learning happens in a traditional classroom.
There was also a question about, is there any law other than the First Amendment that might dictate or acquire a policy around this? I did not have a chance to consult with our attorney on this, but I do not know of anything. I think the, this policy, and particularly the, the regulation that kind of was written with it. Point instead to what we believe are good teaching practices in a public school setting where we would explore topics of interest. While minimizing the impact that teacher bias or leanings may have on the impact of, of the thinking or beliefs of students. while minimizing the impact that teacher bias or leanings um may have on the impact of of the thinking or beliefs of students.
I wouldn't mind if we, and you know, Darnell mentioned this as well, I, you know, since you mentioned that this kind of, the genesis of this was kind of something that had been brought up by a community member that I realize this isn't the same as the discipline policy or anything like that, but it wouldn't hurt to maybe send it to a to committee or spend a work session talking about it, um flushing it out, you know. We spent a work session working on a lot of those other policies. And this is great that we can start talking about this tonight, but I think that um, you know, a lot more work needs to be on something like this that it that that a community member has actually initiated and and wanted us to take a look at. I think that puts a a little bit more responsibility on us to take it, you know, line by line and take a real look at it. And um and, you know, I don't know, Darnell, if you if you're comfortable, send it to to a committee or if you want to take a look at it through a work session or how you want to do it. Yes, Jean Marie is holding her hand.
Uh yeah, I answered. Team, go ahead, then I I I respond to Julie's question.
Okay, I, okay, number one, um Dr. Painter, this um, the markings of taking things out on here, what was that of the um six administrators that worked on this?
You know what? I don't, Dr. Condon, can you remind me on that? Because this came back looking very different than what we had written in your office that day.
So what we wrote, it begins with what is in yellow. Apparently, when we sent this in, what MSBA did was they compared it to the MSBA policy that has this same title. And so what they did was they put their policy up here and crossed out what we didn't include and highlighted what we put into it. Does that make sense?
Um say it one more time because I I guess I was thinking that mine was on a black and white copy. And so the yellow part is what you added?
Yellow part is what we wrote. MSBA, their policy included the parts that were crossed out, but they're showing that what we are writing does not include that.
Say that last part again. Their writing does not include.
So MSBA has a policy, this policy INB. And their policy begins with the Board of Education recognizes controversial issues are an inherent part of the democratic tradition. That was part of their verbiage.
Right. And you just crossed it out.
They crossed it out, just so that we're not using that in our proposed policy.
Okay.
It's directly from them.
Okay. Well, first, I should have started this with thank you for doing this work and beginning this work. Um I think that let's just put it out there that this is a hard topic. This is been um a hard situation for um for everyone. And I appreciate you all being willing to do this work. And um with that being said, some of the things that I look at when I um in looking at this policy and reviewing this policy is one of the things that I think is really important is that we um, as Julie said, have a work session. And um some of the high level things that I um feel are important to put into this policy are, um I think it's important that we define what a controversial issue is. Because for me, a controversial issue could not be the same as what Darnell thinks is controversial or, you know, that kind of thing. So I think that it will be very important in this policy for us to have a definition of controversial issues. And then also, I think that it would be very important and beneficial for us to break the policy out and talk about the role of the teacher in a controversial issue. As a former teacher, I will just put my two cents out there that it, I feel, is important for a teacher to be a facilitator and honor all uh ideas and all beliefs. Um again, that goes back to social, emotional well-being and health. Um so I think that we need to have role of the teacher, we need to have role of the administrator, role of parents, and role of students. And then I'd like to kind of maybe see if we could add some standards or baselines or or some different things. And I have some ideas under each category that I would love to work together with the board and the administration to kind of dig deeper into.
You know, it's interesting because we also wrote a procedure to go with this and it has a little bit more detail. So maybe when we do um sit down and examine this more deeply, we can share that procedure with everyone. Um just so that you're aware, be- because that procedure does break down a little bit more on what the roles are and what the procedure is, what the teacher should, the process the teacher should follow, if there is a topic that's controversial and talking with the principal and so that's definitely something that we can share with the board too.
I I think it's just going to be really important to have people on both sides and all sides of this issue be able to weigh in. I don't want anyone to feel like they've been left out of the process or that their voice didn't get heard. So I just want to make sure that however Darnell decides to, you know, whatever format this looks like. And and Jane Marie, I think you had some good points. I just want to make sure that we have input from um from all parties so that everyone feels like they, that there was an actual compromise, you know, like give and take on every, on all sides.
And to to that, to even go further on to that point, Julie, I think that one of the things that we could do is like uh in in the, in my world, how I would look at this, is we work as a work session, right? And then you guys go back to the drawing table or whatever. And then um we do another lodging. And then maybe we have an opportunity that somehow we have our community, a group of our community, again, with both all people represented, where we're seeking, um, you know, we're seeking input. And but we have something that we're seeking input on, that we're giving them something and we want their feedback on. And I also think it would be important to not only hear from our community on this policy, but also to hear from a group of teachers and administrators on this policy. And then we could, after we hear the feedback, maybe go back to the drawing board together as a team of administrators and board and then see what we, you know, if there are changes. And that, does that make sense?
Um I just, yeah, I'd just like to to add in that um this policy writing, if it's only one group of people, it's not as good as engaging all the stakeholders. And I think that's what Jean Marie is saying. So we refer this to a committee of teachers, principals, administrators, and board members. This is something that takes time. It it'll take time because it's a big issue. And as Julie said, we want to make sure everyone is heard. So this is the first time we're looking at this policy and this, I believe, is a new policy for Kirkwood. There's also our peer districts in the in the neighborhood as well and what they have. And I am, I want to thank Dr. Painter for his work in gathering the information. But I think it really is a big thing to tackle. It's it's something that we have to consider. The engagement is part of the actual making of the policy, not just the writing, but having the people who are experiencing and implementing it as well. And there's one word in here that says the board authorizes. And I think um authorizing something by the board is a very big deal. So I think there's, there should be a lot more work. And I thank Dr. Condon for saying that we're, we will lodge this at another time. And then moving forward, Darnell, if you want to do a work session or form a committee. But I think there's a lot here for us to talk about that maybe we don't want to talk all of, all about it tonight.
Exactly where I was going to go. Actually, I was going to back up Julie and Jean Marie. I I like where you guys are going with uh having a work session on it. I think it's important that we engage, but I think we we have to have a discussion on how we engage the community and how we engage the staff, how we, how we talk to people. So I think we set this up as the the work session. We we not only plan what this may look like, but we plan how we, how it looks to to our community and everyone involved and stakeholders. So um that's kind of where I see this going is we put, we put a a work session together where we do some more planning around organizing this thing.
I mean, I do, I do want to make sure that like we have, say, I mean, there might be more than two sides to this, or maybe eight sides, who knows? But I would like to know what the priorities are for each stakeholder. Otherwise, we don't really know, I mean, we can write something up, but we may have missed the whole point of what, you know, most people wanted to have addressed.
I'll be honest with you, I um, I think that we have heard from our community um that they want us to um work on a policy. And I think that absolutely we need to get input eh from our community and um that kind of thing. I think that it's important that we begin to work as a board and as administrators, begin to work and then we, you know, bring the community in. I I.
You know what their priorities are, Jean Marie, and you can enlighten us all because I don't know what everyone's priorities are. So I mean, that's great that you do.
But again.
I'm not saying that I do at all, Julie, but what I'm saying is you've been at the meetings as well as I for the last year that we've had both sides of our community.
I know what one side wants because I've, I've read a lot of information, but I certainly don't know what the priorities of the other side are.
But I, that's what I think.
That we're addressing everyone's concerns.
And I guess here's the other thing, you know, again, this to me is about, it it shouldn't necessarily be about sides. Rather, it should be about um, you know, neutrality and.
I agree. I don't disagree with you. I don't disagree with you at all.
And and.
Let's just let Darnell figure out how we're going to move on from here because we don't need to hash it all out tonight.
Well, we. Yeah, I would just ask Darnell that we um, if we are not going to lodge, that we call a special work session because I'll be honest with you. I think that um this is work that needs to be done and we cannot continue to not do the work. And I feel like by not lodging this tonight, we are signaling to our community that we are um are not doing the work that needs to be done.
Just to be clear, um Dr. Condon said we're not lodging quite a few of these policies just because they need a little bit more work. So I think this one will be in the group of it needs a little more work. So hopefully the community understands we are dedicated to working on this.
And lodging means that the board has been provided a first reading. Um I think our attorney is present. Andy, can you hear us?
Andy is just an attendee. If you want me to bring him on to the uh meeting, I I can do that.
And I called MSBA today to talk to MSBA. I talked to Susan Goldhammer about this. And essentially what Susan said was absolutely you can lodge a policy and begin the work on it. And then you work on it and and then, or you discuss it, give guidance, and the administration goes back to the drawing board. And then they bring it back to us to lodge again. And she said oftentimes with controversial issues, it can be lodged a few times. So.
Okay, but we're not lodging it. Dr. Condon already said that. So can we get off that crazy train and move on with whatever we're moving on to next? Because I'm tired of talking in circles about whether we're lodging it or not. This is, this is ridiculous waste of time conversation.
So we don't have to vote to lodge these, so we can move on.
Michelle, can I, can I ask just a couple of quick questions since I didn't get a chance to talk? Okay, so um just a couple of things and you can chalk this up for later conversation. But I would like to know how specifically this differs from some of the other districts. You said that five out of fifteen have a policy. I think that would be good to know. Um I'd also like a larger or longer conversation on how we define controversial issues. Again, thinking of how this policy is followed in the classroom to further the previous discussions that we just had. And then um one of my questions for whatever the training or work session or whatever the next steps are, I don't really care. I think it would behoove us to have a non-biased uh facilitator who doesn't live in the district um come in and um walk through some of that with us if it was a possibility. That's it. Thank you.
Just one more.
Hold on, Jean Marie. Hold on, hold on, Jean Marie. Uh so my question is, first of all, appreciate the work that Dr. Painter and and Dr. Condon did on this. But understanding a little bit about its genesis, I want to be clear is uh, is it your view, Dr. Condon, that uh having a policy such as uh the one that's put forth today, but having a controversial issues policy is something that is needed to solve a problem in the district now? Or is this um uh, you know, sort of something being proposed because of uh one or more parents who have brought it up?
Um I'm following a process and it was um really triggered by a community member who had um, you know, had a request to develop a policy. And so that's why um, you know, I initiated the process. It does have ramifications um with teachers and um principals kind of being the gatekeeper. So, you know, if we were to adopt a policy like this, there would have to be um, I would say, almost training or professional development for our staff and principals on how to implement the the policy, which happens. You know, we do that when policies change, we provide information to our principals and our staff. One example was um the um information, the change to the staff behavior policy last year. And and we went to um meetings and provided professional development. Um so, you know, I, that's a really good question. I mean, the reason I brought it forward is because, you know, we had a community member who who felt like um it was something that we needed to look into.
And I want to be clear here, we're doing, we're looking into this, like it's been something we've been talking about. We just have to continue what's the best next step. And that's why I think a work session on this is like all the questions that that even this Mark just a- asked. We don't really have all of the answers now, but if we sit down and talk through this and get a chance to really work on it, we can come up with some answers.
Right.
Yeah, and I I would just add, and then we can wrap it up, guys. I mean, there's, there's a reason why we have policies and policies are here so that we know how to operate and execute when something gray or murky comes up. So that's, that's really, I think, why Dr. Condon and the team is working on this. And it's really about, you know, there, there's no sides here. It's about neutrality. And it's about having some some bumper rails and guidelines so when things get wonky, we know what to do. And like any policy, sometimes they're very vague and sometimes they're not, and this is new ground. So we just got to show some grace, work with each other here.
Can I say something quickly in response to Mr. Boyko? I I do believe that uh, first of all, a workshop session is going to be very helpful. I actually think that we we intended for this to be a work session evening where we'd be able to discuss this. It was obviously brought forth as a result of um a a concern. I believe that controversial, what is controversial is a very personal thing to people.
I believe that controversial, what is controversial is a very personal thing to people. And so I think making a definition or a list of what may be controversial or not is going to be very difficult. But one thing that I've heard from a number of people, including the person who brought this forth, is that there's a belief that sometimes in our district, issues are not looked at through multiple perspectives and that what the students are getting is the perspective of the teacher only. And I don't know that that's to be true, but if there are a number of people who have said that, then it is worth, in my opinion, setting out some parameters so that we can all work together on what that looks like. I am concerned because I've already heard, for example, some teachers say that they're not going to teach into or that they don't feel comfortable teaching into the election that's upcoming because there may be too many people that are going to be upset if they talk about it and there'll be arguments and there may have parents who are upset on both sides. At a time where we need to be teaching into critical and creative thinking, where we need to be teaching into civil discourse, I think the worst thing we can do is avoid these conversations that may be difficult. We have to teach kids how to do it. And that, I think, is the potential behind this. Whether we have a policy or not, we need to be moving forward with that sort of thing. But the policy itself was brought forth particularly in response to a concern by community members that clearly is something we want to put good faith into.
You know, Dr. Painter, you couldn't, you couldn't have said it better. I just really appreciate you reminding me even of that conversation. And so I think helping our kids learn to have conversations like that and helping our staff learn how to facilitate conversations like that is important.
So, Dr. Condon, the last thing I'd urge you to do is maybe just give us an idea or a goal for a timeline so this just isn't hanging out there. And so that would be my only suggestion.
Sure. Well, I think we're full in May, but we'll have to look at some June dates for a work session as soon as we're able to. So I'll work on that and send some.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Is there any way we can, you know, at this time, I think that we're all home. Is there any way we can add a work session or no?
Oh, sure we can. It's just that next week we have architect work session presentation and then the week after is our board meeting and then the next week is Memorial Day. So it will have to be in June. Unless we wanted to do it on a day other than a Monday.
I think May is full enough and maybe you guys are at home. I mean, I don't have extra time because I'm at home. I have less time because I'm at home. So like, I don't, May, I just, that's not, June would maybe be better. I mean, does Dr. Ulrich want to weigh in on any of this? I mean, Dr. Condon's leaving and Dr. Ulrich's going to be probably in the middle of it. So we may want to ask him if he wants to, you know, be able to come in for some of this stuff too, or if he wants to weigh in. But I cannot fit in a work session in May.
And I'll say, I like the June, looking at June, but let me ask Chad, you were saying timeframe, were you meaning timeframe for a next meeting or timeframe for the entire process?
No, no, just a timeframe for the next step. Yeah, the work session. Yeah, so the hanging out there till September or something like that. That's all. Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
And also if we are, have some items that we are not lodging, we probably need to make sure we take the correct vote on what is being lodged and then separate out the things that are not being lodged.
Yeah, I think I had spoken with Andy and I do not think we need to take a vote to lodge anything. Is Andy, are you there? Andy explained to me what lodging really just means is providing a first reading for the board and that we technically don't need to vote to lodge anything, which is why we could, we could lodge at a work session.
Andy, you can talk. I turned your, you can unmute yourself. He's not responding.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Michelle.
I am muted.
Okay, here we go. He's on.
Andy, the question is, do we need to take a vote to lodge policies or?
It's actually, it's actually a little backward. In order to pass a policy, it has to be written and submitted to all of the board members. And the way we've done it, the culture that your board has always used is the prior meeting or the prior work session where, where the formal language was handed to the board so that they had a full time period in between so that they could look at it and think about it. And then they voted and they had the document in front of them. So, so it is, it's, you guys, when you were talking about relodging and relodging, all it means is let's, you have, before you vote, you have to be presented in writing what you're voting on, the final work. Okay?
Okay. Well, I think that the few policies that we have flagged for further research and adjustments, we will follow up on that. And if we hear back from MSBA on those, we'll provide those to the board. Otherwise, we will take the other ones to the board to be voted on on May 18th.
And that's proper.
That's good. Thank you.
So I guess technically this was lodged.
Right. Right.
All righty. We ready to continue to move along in our agenda tonight? Next is 3.02 review and discussion of our extra pay, extra duty contracts. Dr. Condon is up for.
This is Ms. Nelson.
Cindy.
Yes, thanks, Dr. Condon. I'd like to speak to the importance of athletic, performing arts and student clubs. So it's not by accident that we offer extracurricular activities for students that range from high school football to musical theater, all the way to meat club. We know that these opportunities for our students enhance and strengthen their connection to school and more importantly, to each other. If you think back to your youth, you may remember that you had great relationships with people who you had common interests with. Extracurricular activities create space for these connections to happen and we couldn't offer those opportunities for students without adults to sponsor or coach them. We know our extracurricular staff are an integral part in student participation and success and we know that we will need them in the upcoming school year. We just don't know what that will look like at this very moment. With uncertainty around social distancing continuing and the potential on limits to person-to-person contact at the start of the school year, we wanted to take the opportunity to discuss these roles and our options at this time. And if Ms. Casey will allow me, I'm going to go ahead and steal the screen from her.
You should be good to go, Cindy, your co-host. There you go.
Okay. So I first would like to talk about our current practice with our EPED and extended contract issuance. Our current practice is to issue the contracts in May for the upcoming school year. The reasons for May and the timing is having contracts returned home before summer break. Positions are solidified in advance to prepare payroll for the school year and it honors summer camp expectations for staff fulfilling those roles. The types of contracts and letters that we currently issue are that certified staff receive a contract and their pay is dispersed throughout the school year in addition to their regular base salary. Our non-certified staff receive a reasonable assurance letter or stipend and their pay is dispersed during the season of competition or during the performance. We're going to take a quick policy review because we've looked at lots of policies this evening, but I've truncated this for you a little bit. We're going to talk about two in particular, staff extra duty assignments. This refers to all staff members for compensated extra duty positions. So they may be at-will positions or the board may enter into an employment contract for them. So you have the option. For certified staff, GCBA.
Again. Cindy, can you fix your screen? We can't see the whole screen.
We can't see the whole screen.
Or I can't. Maybe I shouldn't speak for everybody. No.
No.
I see it.
I don't see the whole screen. It's.
How about that?
Well, I could see it before.
The whole, all the writing on it?
I could see it before, but I don't know.
Nope.
I can't though. Now I can't see the stuff on, yeah, that, yeah, I can see.
All right, it's not, I can't see any of it. That's fine.
I'll send you a copy, Jennifer, as well. So some situations, and with board approval, an employee may be provided extra duty compensation or a stipend to compensate the employee for performing additional duties. And then another piece of that one is payment for extra duties that are seasonal or limited to a specific timeframe may be paid in the month work was performed. Our final little policy review is going to be for support staff and it is very similar to the certified staff, that employee may be provided extra duty compensation or a stipend to compensate the employee for performing additional duties. So currently we have extra pay for extra duty positions. There are 173 of those positions total, of which 83 are currently held by certified staff members and 93 are by non-certified staff members. There are both athletic and aesthetic positions, aesthetic meaning performing arts, so marching band, drama, musical. And also there are building-specific student clubs and activities which are dispersed at the building level. So the one that I had mentioned earlier, meat club, would have come out of the building specific club account. For our extended contracts, we currently have 73 extended contracts, all held by certified staff members. And an extended contract is an extension to the employee's 10-month teaching contract. Those contracts include school counselors, department chairs, curriculum coordinators and facilitators, library media specialists, student program sponsor and school master mentors. Our current contract language in the actual contracts themselves, they currently have a clause, and I'm not sure if you can see number five, it's very small, that says the district reserves a right to rescind or amend this contract based upon the enrollment needs of the students and/or programs. Mr. Leonard and I had a conversation this, a little bit earlier today, and he adjusted my wording for me. And we have the option to add an additional point that says the district has the right to rescind or amend this contract at its sole discretion at any time, based on state or county orders, enrollment issues or other safety or economic factors, including but not limited to the COVID-19 pandemic. He also gave us that option to add with our stipend or our letter language. Currently, that, that letter itself says this is not a contract. This memo is to verify your employment for this position for the 2021 school year only. You'll be paid at the end of each month during your season of competition. The district reserves a right to rescind or amend this stipend based upon the enrollment needs of the students and/or programs. And again, we could have, we have the option of adding, the district has a right to rescind or amend this contract at its sole discretion at any time, based on state or county orders. I'll let you read the rest. So because of the uncertainty due to COVID-19, we don't know what school's going to look like in the fall. We don't know if we will even be able to hold our fall sports and if they will be able to compete. We have some potential options. I'm just going to outline four of them here. We could delay the issuance of these letters and contracts until July or August when we have clearer guidance from state or local authorities. When I called other districts, our market districts, I heard back from five of them. In the earliest, any of them issued these contracts is July. It was a mix between July and August, right before the school year starts. So we were a little bit early, just in the past. We could issue stipend letters to all EPED employees. That would result in altering the pay for our teachers. Instead of paying it year-round, we would pay it during their season of competition or during the season of that performance. We could enhance the contract or the stipend language to address the COVID-19 uncertainties, which is kind of what we looked at in the past couple of slides. Or we could revise the policies themselves to address COVID-19 uncertainties. And then my last slide is for any questions that you might have about the options that we have.
Let me go ahead and start. A couple of questions, Cindy. So you, you mentioned that usually we do our contracts in May. So in light of COVID-19, is it, are you asking us tonight to delay or are you just saying these are our options? Are you asking us to?
No, no, we are not asking you to delay. Really, we, there were some questions around if and when we had to issue these contracts, particularly given the unknowns for the fall and what our options were around timing around issuing them. So we're not asking you to vote. We're just really just asking any questions you might have of the options at hand.
Yeah, because I've got to be honest, in light of COVID, I mean, July or August, I mean, I just think we have as much information as we can before we make decisions. And I'd like to hear from anybody else on the board who has any comments or questions concerned.
Well, didn't, did MSBA, Angie, didn't you send us, MSBA sent out a recommendation as to what they were recommending school districts around the state do? So if we could address kind of that situation.
Yeah, on April 9th, MSBA had a webinar with recommendations and the title was, are you required to pay employees and contractors during the COVID school closure? And there's a lot of issues related with that. But MSBA recommended at that time, do not, do not write any contracts for extra duty, extra pay because of the uncertainty. So it has been our practice, but it's certainly not required. And alternatively, you can write the letters of intent and that is what they recommend. The reason for that is because contracts are binding, but letters are not. And there's, there are chances that we won't be able to get the students together, unfortunately. But like Darnell said, to wait later would be better. So I would suggest, and I had sent the information from the webinar to Cindy, I believe, regarding the letters versus the contracts. And I think Andy probably has weighed in as well. So just because of the uncertainty this year.
So I agree with Angie. I think another thing that we were, this discussion has been around the extra pay for extra duty contracts. I also think there, that a separate conversation is. But someone's not on mute, an extra, the extended contract.
The one that I have on the screen now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, what's the proposal to handle those then, Cindy? Extended.
There isn't a proposal yet. We really are looking at what our options were and hoping to glean some insight from questions that you might have and questions that other people might have around those.
So I'll chime in on the, on the extra duty contracts. I guess I have two concerns and the first is whether we call it a contract or we don't call it a contract, we need to have the flexibility to, you know, not be making those payments, you know, for the next year at least, until we kind of see what develops. And then the sort of corollary to that is we may end up in a situation where we start school relatively normally in the fall, but then have to shut things down again later in the year. And if we are paying certified extra duty contracts over the course of the entire school year for people who are, you know, active in the spring, and then we don't end up having a spring, there's going to be a huge fairness issue there too. So, you know, to the extent that it's possible, I would love to see those paid out, at least for this year, in a way that is the same as what's being done for the non-certified staff so that we avoid a, you know, actual or perceived fairness issue if some seasons are able to go forward and some aren't.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, and to that point, you know, Mark, I think that what can happen is, you know, a season can go so many days and then your season is, you know, cut short. Do we still pay out that entire contract or do we do, you know, do we only pay for the day, you know, I don't know.
Yeah, I guess my point is there's a lot of uncertainty and, you know, I don't think that we should be committing ourselves to, you know, full pay nor, or should we be getting ourselves in a situation by paying people now, you know, paying for people in August and September for work that may or may not end up getting done in the spring. So that's to the extent you're looking for our insight, that's my two cents worth.
Yeah, and I think also there's probably, when you get down to the details of the list, there might be some more essential than others. And I'm sure we can, you can recommend to us what that would be.
Right. That's a good point, Angie.
And also remembering that even the language that Cindy showed us from our attorney, I mean, it gives us the right and flexibility to sort of handle situations as they arise. So, you know, it helps, speaking exactly to what Mark and Angie are talking about, like if the season's cut short, or if a season doesn't happen, we have the language in there to help handle situations such as these.
So just to clarify, are you talking about just sending out letters of intent?
That, that sounds like what a couple of people are, are maybe suggesting. I don't, we have not made a final decision yet. We wanted to get your thoughts and some thoughts of some other people before we bring a recommendation to you for a vote.
Well, other people like who?
Like the MSBA, because they totally said, don't write any more contracts.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm okay with not writing. I'm just sending letters of intent. But so, like, just, that's, I appreciate that, Cindy, that you want to get, you know, a feel for what the, what the board feels like we should do. But who else would you be?
Well, I think, talking to our building administrators, and showing the options again, and having further discussion of what are the questions that you have around changing from a contract to a stipend letter that maybe we haven't foreseen, and maybe, possibly a couple of people that would be affected, just to get an idea of what we can do to mitigate some of the concern, or produce some of the messaging around why the change.
Well, I mean, you know, if, if that's kind of, I think we can, we can really stand behind the fact that that is what the Missouri School Board Association is suggesting, and that is what other school districts are going to be. It's like, it's a statewide thing. It's not like we've just come up with some bizarre thing on our own that we've decided to, you know, send something out that's just going to punish our EPED people. So I think that because it was an MSBA stated, whatever it was.
Recommendation.
Yeah, recommendation. I'm sorry, guys, I'm really, really winding down.
I would agree, but I just think that we need to make sure that we are communicating with the staff that this affects, so that they have a full understanding of this. And to your point, Julie, I think you're spot on. This is an MSBA recommendation, to, to help those individuals understand what, kind of what we're dealing with and where we're coming from.
And, and that was going to be my comment. Jean Marie, it's, Cindy, for you, I just would want to make sure that from now to whatever decision the letters are sent out, that we are being very clear that, yeah, what Julie said, this is an MSB, MSBA recommendation. But yeah, let's be really transparent because of the unknowns and, you know, unforeseeable future of how this could play out. I think that's the most important thing with everything with COVID-related.
And most of these won't take effect for quite some time. So we do have some time, I think, on our side, right now.
The extra, the extended contracts have the potential of taking effect sooner.
First would be the earliest they would take effect.
Okay.
So the compensation doesn't start until August 31st for those teachers with their first pay of the new school year, but the actual work typically starts after July 1st.
So Cindy, what would be your next step with, with our feedback?
I think having the discussion with cabinet around what the recommendation will be brought to the board, when maybe it would be brought to the board, and then a draft of the language that we're going to share with the people who normally would be expecting their, their notification in May, and getting a timeline, and some good avenues, some good channels of communication for them.
So I don't want to lose sight that we haven't discussed the extended contract. So we, I feel like we've given you direction on the extra pay contracts, but haven't necessarily talked about the extended contracts.
So Jean Marie, the current, the staff that currently have extended contracts, and correct me if I'm wrong, Cindy, anyone who would be working past May 21st this year, that, those contracts have already been issued. They were issued last year, correct?
Correct.
And so what we're talking about are people who would be starting early, the earlier than the first day of school over the summer, correct?
Correct. Now, you know, positions like school counselors, whether we're physically in school or not physically in school, they will be enrolling and unenrolling and changing schedules. They will be doing a large portion of that work, whether we're at school or not in school, virtually or seated, I should say. Department, I mean, the other ones, department chairs, that could look virtual. I think we would have to have a better plan around what that would look like in the expectation. Curriculum coordinators and facilitators, they're doing their work in the summer. They're starting the curriculum review, or they're finalizing curriculum in July, and providing professional development in July and August. And I think right now, they're planning on it being virtual. So a lot of these things are going to happen, whether we're seated at school on August 24th and 26th, or we're at home virtually. So I think probably an analysis of each one of these positions is necessary before we bring you a recommendation.
Yeah, and I would just kind of, in that analysis, I would just ask that you kind of be looking at things in terms of, you know, their job, what can be done at home versus what can't be done at home, to help us.
I will just jump in if I can and point out, to Ms. Bernardi's point earlier, all of these are important, but there are some of these that may even be more important this summer, because we're preparing for multiple options.
Yeah, good, good point. I think maybe just prepare a package of things, like you said, they're most important, because like the counselors, the scheduling, you know, they're more important than maybe we don't have some other items. So we'll look forward to your recommendations of what is most important.
One more thing is the, like custodians and that kind of thing, will we be discussing those, or no?
Well, currently, they are year-round at well employees. I'm not sure we have enough information to talk about any changes to that point.
Okay.
Cindy, just one thing to also consider is maybe we look at an option where we can prorate days of service if there isn't interruption. So just something to think about. We don't have to discuss it right now.
Thank you.
All righty, so we are at like eight o'clock now, and I think we had six to eight scheduled for this meeting. So are we, maybe we're supposed to stint time on this if we're going to keep going?
We've got 30 minutes. Yeah, I mean, you can have a vote and extend for 30 minutes. But you need a vote, a motion, a second, and a majority vote.
Make a motion to extend the meeting 30 minutes.
Second.
All right, motion a second, 10, 30 minutes. To extend the timeframe, we will, 30 minutes. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Close, motion passes. All right. And then I'll be proud to be a little respectful of our, on our next agenda item. So go ahead and move through. I'm assuming we wrapped up discussion on 3.2. And we're ready to go. Is approval of our parent voter information letter. And we want to have kind of a discussion about this. And I'll give kind of an overview of what we're discussing here. So this, this was an idea we came about. There, there's been a lot of discussion in light of this COVID-19 about voting, and how our citizens vote, how our parents vote, how the community is able to get out and pass the vote. And as a district, I'm thinking it's a good idea for us to help our parents understand what their options are. So we kind of came up with a letter that kind of has some info in there, just saying, hey, let's hear your options, and this is how you can, can get out to make sure you vote, because I think we want to make sure everyone's, everyone is safe and healthy and taken care of. But we want to make sure they know what their options are in our voter. And I wanted to kind of get some, some feedback from the board on what, you know, this letter and what it looks like, and some thoughts on just making sure we can get this and out to our community, so they have some information. So I'm open for discussion really quickly here.
Well, I guess I'll just open it up and say, and ask, like, how much it's going to cost to send this out? Because you can fill out the absentee ballot application at online for free. You can download it and fill it out and send it in for free. And so I just want some clarification about how much it's going to cost, how many pieces of paper are we actually sending? Is it three? And, and there is a line in there that says that we believe it is important for our parents to have the same info as other registered voters in response to the 60 and over. And so what my, one of my questions, other than cost, because I'm trying to like, just tell you everything really quickly so we can move on, is that, you know, I have neighbors in their 50s that don't have any kids in school. So are we leaving them out? Are they getting the proper information? I mean, are we covering all bases? I mean, I have, you know, I know a lot of 24 and 25-year-olds that live, you know, in apartments and that kind of thing, and they don't have kids in school. So are we leaving them out of information? And I think we've sent stuff out before, you know, in the KSD spotlight. I think that, you know, we've, Ginger's done a good job of sending information out about the, about the change in absentee ballot voting. So I, I just worry that, that we're going to be sending things. So, okay, we've covered 60 and over, and we've covered parents, but now who else are we leaving out? And so is the district prepared to send something out to all voters in Kirkwood School District to make sure everyone's covered?
So I don't have a quote on, on all voters, like 50 and under. I mean, we could, or 60, and I guess it'd be under 60. We certainly could get that. But for 3,000 voters, we got a quote for two pieces of paper inside an eight and a half by, or number 10 envelope. It would be about $1,200.
Yeah, and originally, my thinking was, we were just going to parents. And it wasn't about trying to leave anyone off. I just wanted to make sure that, you know, our parents who are in our district that we, we communicate with, you know, regularly, had the information that they need. This is simply just information providing for the people that are in our district. It was the way I did this letter.
Well, I just want to chime in, because I'm one of the left-out people, because we got parents, and then we've got people over 60, but there's alumni parents, there's lots of residents that will be falling in between. So if we want everyone to have the same information, then I, I think that that's really not what's happening. But my question is, when was the last time we sent a letter, a paper letter out? Because I don't know that we've even sent one out about COVID. So is, is, I guess Ginger might be able to answer that. What was the occasion? Why do we send it?
Well, schools, schools send paper letters out. We typically don't with the district, but I know schools do. But so, this was just a request, that we look into it. So we didn't want to do that without the board weighing in on whether or not it would be advisable or not.
I just think it looks, it can be controversial. And when things are controversial, I think we would lean on the side of caution. I just think that people could take it the wrong way. And, and spending money on sending out an application for an absentee ballot, which is free, online, it seems like a waste of money. And I don't think that's a very good look for us.
I guess I'm, I'm kind of confused. I mean, we have always sent information on registering to vote and that kind of thing. So I, I don't understand, I guess this is the same to me. It's, you know, letting voter, you know, that kind of thing.
I don't think it's remotely the same.
The County Board of Elections is trying to get as many people, you know, to not be voting on Election Day and vote absentee instead, because they don't have the, you know, polling locations that they can staff.
Why are you targeting Kirkwood?
And I think, hold on, hold on. I, and I think that, you know, this is a positive step, and we can have a discussion about whether it should go to everyone who's under 60, or just our parents. But, you know, I think that this is a positive step at doing what the Board of Elections would like, which is making sure that people know of their option to vote absentee.
Well, if you want to send out something that, that gives information, like Jean Marie says, send out the postcard, the KSD spotlight, an email blast, the principals can send out stuff. You can, you can tell everybody, and all the parents, in numerous ways, how to vote absentee, without sending out an actual
So to your, but to your concern about fairness, the people 16 and above have gotten a physical piece mailed to them. So in the interest of being fair, a physical piece would be mailed to other people. That was your
Are you picking and choosing which other people they're going to be mailed to? I mean, they were mailed to the 16 and over because they thought that, that was in a more dangerous group of people to go and vote. So, I mean, now, now you're just, now you're just picking and choosing, well, we're going to do parents, but we're not going to do alumni parents, or we're going to do parents, but we're not going to be, do people under, you know?
I mean, I think we should be open to looking at other people that mailed to. I mean, if you, if the debate here is, let's look for more people to look, then let's get a price for it, and see what, what that cost us, and what it looks like. I mean, we're, that's, we're certainly open for that.
Did you take our names off of it? Is that, did Andy Leonard recommend that our names come off of it? So our names will not be on it now?
Oh, Andy Leonard, or Darnell Fress asked me to take names off of it.
Yeah, I should hope. I mean, three of us are running for reelection. I mean, I'll take the free press, don't get me wrong, but I think that would have looked inappropriate.
Why would you think that looks inappropriate? Just so I understand.
Well, just because we're, like, my name, your name, and Chad's name is on something, encouraging people to, like, oh, make sure you go out and vote, you know, just
But isn't that what we're already
I, I'm, listen, I don't, I don't, I'm not saying I even think it's inappropriate. I'm saying that it can look, it could look bad, or people could take it wrong. I mean, we always, I mean, Ginger says that to us all the time. We have to be very, very aware of public perception. So, you know, whether any of us think it's inappropriate or not, or whether any of us have a problem with it, we have to look at the bigger picture, and maybe how that could be perceived in the public as a negative, instead of a positive, when we know, then even if we think that our intentions are good, and we just want people to make sure that they have all the information, we have to be very careful about how the public is going to perceive all that.
So, okay, I think it's fine if we take names off. But I think what we need to figure out tonight is, are there changes that we want to make to this letter? Are we good with the letter as it stands?
Well, I just, I have one thing to add. And I know the St. Louis County Board of Elections had best of intentions when they sent that letter out to the 16 and over people, because they thought they were, would be more compromised. And like Mark said, you know, try and get people to know about absentee ballots. But MSBA just has sent out a draft of a resolution, because, you know, we're right in the middle of a health emergency here. So they said to practice good communication governance, we should direct all community members to official district communications. So that this would be from the district, I guess that's my question. And then also, will this be the only thing we're sending? Only this letter and the absentee paper? Is that all that we're sending?
Well, and per our communication plan, we send out information every month, mail information via the postcard. So as Prop S is on the ballot, it's our responsibility to communicate information about Prop S. So I don't know what, what, you know, we're planning on sending another postcard in May. So that, that's what we've been doing. So I would assume we would send another postcard that would contain information about what's going on with our seniors and the district overall, as well as reminding people about Prop S.
So the card's coming in May, but that's coming to all the people, right? Like you always
That goes to about 17,000 people, yeah.
Right. So that's our, all of our district, because I know I just got a nice one. Thank you. And so this is just, in addition, just to parents, maybe. That's what we're considering.
That was the original suggestion, yes.
And I can see why the, you know, I mean, the St. Louis County Board of Elections, that's their job to kind of, but I just think that it might be perceived as us overstepping to be sending out something similar that the County Board of Elections sent out. I, that's just my opinion. Just a minute, Jean Marie, I see you raising your hand. I, I think that if Ginger's, I mean, if Ginger's sending stuff out every month on a postcard anyway, then why would we do this separately? then why would we do this separately? If, if something's going out in May and there might be another communication plan, or whatever they have planned to be sending stuff out, why couldn't you just put this information on, on the card? I mean, that just seems like, and now how mu- Ginger, did you say twelve hundred dollars to send this out to how many people?
About three thousand. Two pages. I, I, I asked for, just for two pages. Currently, the proposal's three pages, but certainly we can figure something else out.
You must be getting a deal, because I just looked up to see how much it would cost to send out mailers for my campaign. It was a lot more expensive than that.
Please, Bender.
Darnell, you, have you checked with any, like, have you gotten any input from our attorney or the Board of Election or anything of that?
Yes, all. Through our attorneys, I also have spoken to the MSBA attorney, Susan Goldhammer. And yeah, I've reached out to, to the Board of Elections office as well. And, and really what this is, is it's an informational piece. I mean, this is, and I didn't really realize that there was, would be this much debate over it, because the way we saw it is, look, we just want to send out, you know, something to make sure that our voters are, are, understand what their options are. Because right now, in this COVID-19, things are different. Nothing is the same. And it's important that people understand they have options, and we just wanted to be able to help our parents be able to, to, to move forward and get out to vote as they need to. So, you know, that's what I saw this as. This is, you know, we have an action item on the agenda for approval of it tonight to send out, and again, my, my hope was that if we want to tweak this thing, we look at sending that to more people, I'm, I'm good with that. But as far as the letter stands, I mean, it, it's, it's real straightforward, it's pretty open, it doesn't direct anyone to, to vote a certain way, it's pretty generic, it's just an information. It's, it's strictly information saying, hey, these are your options.
You guys are going to be eaten alive when you send this out, just so you know. I warned you.
Well, and if we vote, it's coming out from the district, correct?
Is it coming from the district then?
Well, I think, I think the whole purpose of this conversation was to find out from the board what your views on doing this would be. So certainly at the, you represent the community, so if the overall consensus of the board is that, whether it's from the district or from the board, that it's not a good idea, then certainly we won't do it. So I think that that's what we're asking. As, as the people who represent the community, what are your beliefs on sending something out? We've been, people have asked us if we're going to, certainly we can send an email to our parents, certainly. We can put in the alumni e-call. We're, we're trying to also start sending stuff out to our alumni parents, so certainly we can do that. So we just want to check in with our board to make sure that we are being responsive to our community and not overstepping. So that's, that's what we're asking the board.
Well.
Well, what, why don't you just go board member by board member and we give our opinion?
I'm good with that. Well, I, I'll go ahead and start, and then we can go from there. I mean, I, to me, I'm, I'm, I, again, I, I've said it before, I'm looking at this as an informational piece and nothing more. I mean, I, I, I don't understand how it, it, it can be taken out of context of what it really is, and to me, it, it's just, hey, look, I heard some information went out to some residents in our community. I think we need to make sure we include as many people as we are in touch with already who could have information as well. That's the way I looked at it, that's the way I continue to look at it. And my thoughts are, we send it out, we, we vote to pass it and send it right through.
I think that everyone can have the best intentions, and it's certainly never a bad thing to try to get more people to go vote, but we are, we all need to be very realistic about the community that we live in and the divisiveness, and, and I do live in the community, and I do have an idea of what, how people will take this, and whether it's, you know, how we meant it to look like or not, it's not going to be perceived well, and they, and you guys, I'm going to feel bad, but they are, it's not going to go over well.
How will it be perceived?
That the district is, I mean, really, you want me to just spell it out for you, Jean Marie? I mean, Mark's laughing, but I mean, it's true. They're, they're going to say the district is using Kirkwood School District funds to try to get people to come out and vote for Prop S. That's exactly what they're going to say. You want me to spell it out? That's what they're saying already, and that's what they're going to continue to say, and they're going to eat you guys alive and spit you out.
So to be clear, Julie, I was just laughing because I thought we were going around in order, and then we started taking questions, so that was.
Sorry, Mark.
That's okay. So.
I'm right, I'm sorry, I'm right next to Darnell on my screen, so in my world, I was going in order, so. It goes Darnell, Julie, Jean Marie, Michelle Condon on my screen.
No, that's okay. So to my, my point, I guess, is it, it seems like a no-brainer to me. It's three thousand households, so five, six thousand parents for twelve hundred dollars, and if we can stop one of them from contracting the virus and bringing it back to their house where some of our students are, I think that's twelve hundred dollars well spent. And to the point about unfairness, I mean, you know, Julie's original point at the start of this was that it's not fair to mail ballots to some people and not, or ballot applications to some people and not other people, and yet that's the environment we find ourselves in right now, where our, our parents have not had the same access that people sixteen above had had. So, you know, I, I've spoken with the both the Democratic and Republican representatives, counselors of the Board of Elections, and they are all about trying to get as many people as possible to vote absentee, and I think this is furthering, not, not a partisan agenda, but and we don't mention Prop S, so we don't mention a school board candidate. It's furthering the safety of the community and the goal that the election board has of having a safe, fair election.
I will just speak from a personal view from this. Having a health concern, an immune system problem, I would appreciate this as a parent because it informs me of, you know, what I can do and would get me able to be able to vote. And so I am in support of this and would hope that our community would see the intent of this letter is strictly to just bring education to the, you know, bring the education of like, this is your options, and not as anything other than that.
We're at twenty-one, we have nine minutes left.
Alright, I'll just go real quickly. Again, I think everybody's at the right place, they're trying to do the right thing. I do believe that there'll be backlash and this will hurt us. I think we're skirting a very thin line here that crosses into politics, and I, I think it's dangerous, so. Again, just my opinion, but I think for twelve hundred bucks, you're going to get about three thousand dollars worth of pain. So, thank you.
And I, and I'll, I'll be quick too. I am the left-out person, so the County Board of Elections' goal is to get, meant all the people to vote that they can, that's their goal, and I think it's very good intentioned. And they were good intentioned in sending their letter to the sixteen-over crowd, and you're very good intentioned in sending a letter to our parents. But there's a lot of in-between people. If there's seventeen thousand and there's three thousand households, and there's a lot of left-out people. So I'm, I'm not sure that that's equitable either. And as a school board, you know, our goal is to educate students, not to get the voters out, but I agree, we should get the voters out, absolutely. As an informational piece, but the only concern I have is, we haven't really said anything about the big pandemic, and we're sending this letter out, so. Either way, it's fine. That's all.
I think I'm the last to go. I think, I think that in this day, with everything going on in the pandemic, that every person has a right to vote safely. I have family in Wisconsin that went out and had to stand in line in the very controversial vote that happened there a couple weeks ago, and I think it is sad that that happened, and I hope that we've learned from it. I believe sending this letter out is purely good intention, and I hope that if we take a vote, that our school board members can also explain the good intention, that it's not trying to push a proposition, but also do what the County Board of Election could do, because I think this also comes down to us explaining the reasoning for why we're passing it, which is to tell people how to get out and safely vote. And just do our part in the democracy. So I think sending the letter out is good. I would implore us to look at sending that to more households than just parents, but at minimum, I think we should educate our parents.
And just to be sure though, and we have Mark can fill us in. So the reasons for absentee voting have not changed. There's still the four reasons that are online, so these are the same reasons. Unfortunately, we cannot all vote absentee. Is that correct, Mr. Boyko? I think you're that.
There's six reasons, not four, and.
Why ask you?
Compliance due to illness or injury. And former Chief Justice of the Missouri Supreme Court on the twenty-fourth sent out a legal memo that was signed by many of the prominent St. Louis and Kansas City lawyers, supportive of the idea that fear of contracting or spreading COVID is a qualifying reason under that, you know, requirement. Now, obviously, this letter doesn't, you know, make some sort of legal claim, it only parrots the language that the, the County Board of Elections sent, so. We're not making any statement that wasn't already sent to the people sixteen above.
Right, but fear of it is not a reason. Fear is not a reason.
That, that's not true. That's not true. It's, it's unsettled. The, the Secretary of State has not made a definitive statement about whether fear of COVID is a reason or not. But again, the, the greatest legal minds of the state of Missouri, for whatever that's worth, have signed on to a memorandum, saying that in their view, in their review of case law and the statute, is that a, a fear of spreading COVID, or contracting COVID would be a qualifying reason.
I think that's why it's, it would be a really good idea to make sure that in our e-blast from principals and the school district, that we make everyone aware that the absentee ballot application is online. I have filled it out online in the past, my kids have filled it out online on, in, in the past. It's very easy to do. It's probably not as easy for someone sixteen or over to fill out an online application, but it is not difficult, and if we, and, and if we're in the business of providing information, that would be good information to send out to our parents, that you can go online to the web, the St. Louis County website, and fill out an application for an absentee ballot online.
Well, maybe we should add that into the letter.
Yeah, that, that's. Yeah.
Well, here, here's, let's go with this, because we've got five minutes, guys. So this, we, this really is an action item for approval of the parent voter information level.
I move approval.
Wait, is it just for the parents though, or? Just.
Wait, can we look into, Darnell, you know?
Yeah, I don't know. What are we voting on? Just the parents right now?
Angie, what were your actions, Ginger?
I mean, should we, based on everybody's comments, should we look into mailing it to sixty, yeah, under sixty and our parents who are registered to vote? I mean, we can cut it down by those who are registered to vote versus every parent, but.
So my concern is that the deadline's the twentieth for them to return these.
Well, and that's not the, that's not the, that's not what's on the table.
Right, so. We should vote on what's on the table, and then we have a separate, you know, idea in the next week to.
Okay.
Do a second.
Got it.
But I think that's a, that's a good idea, Ginger. Alrighty, so. Motion and second, we have motion and second for approval of the parent voter information letter. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed?
Nay.
No.
No.
For three vote, motion passes. Thank you. Alrighty, and we also have on our agenda, so Dr. Condon, is there a need for a closed session?
Yes, there is.
Alrighty, roll call, please.
Aye.
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 Alrighty, and we need a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Motion?
Second.
Alright, motion and second to adjourn. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Adjourn, thank you all very much.